I'd like to welcome everybody to December 7, 2021 council meeting. At this present time, I guess I would like to have everybody stand for pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this present time, if everybody would remain standing, I might ask a favor of Mayor. Maybe you can do an indication.
Sure. We ask the Lord to bless our community, bless our elected officials tonight, what guides us as we determine the best way forward for the community. Bless especially our healthcare workers who are working diligently to combat the effects of the coronavirus. We ask your special blessing on those who are ill tonight and need your help. All this in Jesus' name we pray.
Amen.
Amen.
Okay. Roll call.
McKeever.
Here.
Myers, here. Me.
Here.
Trucca.
Here.
Sherrick.
Here.
Foote.
Here.
All set.
Here.
Next order of business is to accept the minutes. We have three different sets of minutes. I need a motion to accept November 16 minutes as a regular council meeting.
So moved.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Aaron was first, right?
Yeah.
Oh, you got it.
Yep.
Okay. The second set of minutes are from November 18, and that's a special council meeting. There again, I need a motion and a second.
So moved.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes. And the third and last meeting will be from November 22, 2021. That's a special council meeting, and I need a motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes. Thank you. At this present time, anybody would like to speak from the public? No? Okay. Thank you. Communications and petitions?
We have several to go through. The first is from the Bussiris Public Library. Dear council members, the Bussiris Public Library Board of Trustees has received the resignation from trustee Cassie Grau effective December 31, 2021. The Bussiris Public Library Board of Trustees would like the Bussiris City Council to appoint Eden Spradlin to replace Mrs. Grau. Thank you, Stephanie Buchanan, Director of Bussiris Public Library. This is dated November 12, 2021, and needs referred to economic development.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that's referred to economic development.
The second one is from the Ohio Department of Commerce Division of Liquor Control, and this is noted that there is a transfer request, and this is transferring into the drive-thru that has been out of business for a couple of years. It was just recently purchased on South Sandusky, and this needs referred to health and safety.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes. That's referred to health and safety. Thank you. Next is Planning Commission.
This letter dated December 7. Dear Bussiris City Council, the Bussiris City Planning Commission met on Monday, December 6, 2021, is requested that the following item approved by Planning Commission be submitted to the appropriate council committees for review. Per Bussiris Codified Ordinance 1157.04, Planning Commission submits that the property located at 1145 West Mansfield Street be reclassified from residential estate, the required designation for newly annexed properties, to suburban residential R1. Properties proposed for zoning reclassification code include 1145 West Mansfield Street, parcel ID 050000717000, and 050000718000. Signed, Jeff Reiser. None.
None.
This needs referred to plating.
So moved. Second.
Second by who?
McKeever.
McKeever? All in favor?
Aye.
Second? I mean, opposed?
Did you want to ask about the...
Okay, and then the question is, does council want to have this referred and to have a public hearing on this to actually, because we're bringing a piece of parcel of property into the city of Bussiris? It's a zoning topic, per se, but to follow up with it, though, is Mr. Gurnard's property is contiguous to R1 property, and the recommendation was by Landon Hill is that not necessarily do we have to have a hearing, being that he is contiguous to R1, and there's no other property that he would be able to hook up against and become part of the city.
And what that codified ordinance states is that council may choose to hold a hearing, and so Landon said that that's really our decision. He recommends that we don't need one, but said if he wanted us to have that discussion tonight to see if we wanted to have a hearing.
I trust Landon's opinion.
So do I.
He does a great job.
I'm in agreement.
Okay. You unanimous?
Yep.
Aaron?
Aaron?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, well, then we'll just not have a hearing then. Okay.
That needs, oh, you already referred. Okay. The next one is from the county commissioners. This letter dated Monday, December 6. Good morning. The engineer's office has dropped off corrections needed to be made for the annexation. Please see attachments for their corrections. I am advised that the surveyor will need to go back out and get a corrected map and legal description. I will need a copy. I will also need a corrected ordinance from the city. You will be receiving a corrected resolution entering the annexation on the journal with corrections being made to the legal description. Thank you, Ashley Herr, Crawford County Board of Commissioners. I did call and have a conversation with her, and she basically explained that the information that the person doing the survey was incorrect. It's nothing that we did wrong, but now we have to correct the wrongs that were already done. So this needs referred back to plating, just to change the language of the legal description, which was attachment A or exhibit A on that legislation.
Aaron?
So at that point, would that just be amended?
I respect that.
You could do an amendment, yes. Amend it. It's just the legal description reflects the east. The legal description reflects the east quarter section instead of the west quarter section and 39 degrees or 39 minutes or something. So it's...
Do we have to pay to have this resurveyed?
We do. Not the survey. We have to pay to publish it again.
The survey was paid.
So charge that surveyor to pay to republish it.
Or the person who wants to draft.
Yeah. Yeah, there we go.
He's a bit of pain.
Yeah.
So this needs referred to plating.
So I'll refer that. I'll just refer that.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes.
All right. The next one is from the Bussiris Board of Zoning and Engineering Clerk. Just a reminder that we need to have Mr. William Stuckert reappointed to both the BZA and BBSA boards. Mr. Stuckert is the chairman for both boards, so to avoid him being unable to sit for the meetings in 2022, we'd like to get this on council's agenda, either this month or early next month would be great. Signed, Greg Travis, City Bussiris Zoning and Engineering Clerk. This needs referred to economic development.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes.
And that is all of the written communication we've received.
Next is Stand and Committee Reports. Plating, Mr. McKeever?
I don't have anything.
Okay. Public lands and buildings, Aaron Sherrick?
I have nothing to report at this time. Thank you.
Health and safety, Kevin Myers?
No report, Mr. President.
Finance, Mark McKeever?
All I can say is that we are progressing on the annual budget, and we will have that referred to finance. We'll discuss it Thursday.
Economic development, Doug Foote?
Nothing to report.
And service, myself, no report. And next is Mayor Reeser, Traffic Commission?
I have nothing for traffic.
Okay. I need a motion to accept the reports collectively.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes. Thank you. Next is Report of the City Officers. Mayor Reeser?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just got to paraphrase my report. We're kind of back in a little COVID pickle here. Cases have gone up. Crawford County is ranked third in the state as of last week on cases per 100,000. You might have read the article in Crawford County now that Vida is over capacity. So I'm just asking everyone to, you know, double down. I know it's been, there's a lot of COVID fatigue out there. The big difference this year is many folks have had it, you know, they have some antibodies, and then the vaccine, of course, is a game changer. So I was fortunate to get my booster shot last week, and it doesn't mean I'm not going to get COVID, but if you get your vaccine, the chances of getting something serious are very, very small. And so anyway, do your part. Social distance, same things we've been doing, sanitizing, just be aware of everything. Just be very, very careful. And then we did have some good news. We do apply for grants quite often. We were, we found out yesterday, we were awarded Ohio Public Works Commission grant for $180,000 for the Nevada water line. That's a substantial portion of that project. And then also the partnership on our behalf and on the behalf of the Crawford County Parks District applied for a grant for extension of the Old Miller Park walking path. And so when you cross Friendship Bridge, you know, we're proposing to go to the west. We'll also be using that to access our CSOs and some of our manholes that are back there, too. So more information on that will be coming down at a future meeting. Might have Aaron Stein, who headed up that effort, over here talk a little bit about. So we're pretty excited about that. We expected to hear about another grant today, but we never did, whether we got it or not. So there may be one other announcement coming, hopefully, and that's all I've got for tonight. Oh, wait a minute, one more thing. Tomorrow morning at 7 o'clock, if none of you have ever come, Terry's been there, right? It's the men's prayer breakfast, which actually is misnamed the men's prayer breakfast because there's plenty of women that come, too. Tomorrow, Clay Hall from Channel 6 has always been very entertaining. He will be there tomorrow morning, 7 o'clock at Trillium. I think the cost is, what, $9 for a really nice breakfast? So if you're not doing anything at 7:00 a.m., you're usually over by a little bit after 8:00, so. All right, that's all for me. Right. I got it. To elaborate on the CSOs a little bit, how often they need cleaned up, this is the main purpose we're putting that in, but also double as a walking path. Yeah. Great. Go ahead. So, yeah, so if you walk back there, it's very moist and very swampy, very difficult for our equipment to get back there, so it'll help us to maintain that much better and also double as a walking path, too, and connect them with hunger farms, too. So the paths at Old Miller get a lot of use. I've noticed it in especially the last few years, so we're always looking for ways to improve that, and Friendship Bridge gets a lot of use, and Friendship Trail gets a lot of use. So people have voted with their feet and their bikes, that they love those things, so, and their strollers, too, so.
Any questions? More questions?
Service Safety Director?
Jeff's got a few things. One, let you know that the airport taxiway project is, will not be completed until spring because the weather got cold quickly, and just getting asphalt is not possible anymore, so we're going to delay that till spring. The Mary Street Bridge, continuing to work on that, you know, the more we got into, the more, you know, problems we saw, so hopefully that should be done here very shortly. We congratulate John Wood, a longtime employee, over 20 years, worked in water distribution. He retired recently. Wish him the best of luck. We still have his son working for us, Tim, at the wastewater treatment plant. They've been a very good people to have for the city. Trash pickup, it's never too early to start talking about trash pickup, so we will be closed on 24th and the 31st, and so that trash will not be picked up until the following Monday, just so you know. We'll put that on our website, too. And that's it for Jeff's report.
Any questions for the Service Director?
Also, he did mention that he wanted to make sure he got materials and supplies bids referred to Service and Finance.
Okay. He didn't tell me that.
He told me that.
Motion by Doug?
Second.
Second by Lisa? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Opposed? Okay, that motion passes. It's both to Service and Finance. Okay. Mr. Law Director, Mr. Gurnard?
Other than the usual course of business in the Law Director's office, there's nothing extraordinary. There is a Board of Zoning Appeals. The board denied a variance on a property on Beale Avenue. A contiguous homeowner was affected or aggrieved by that denial somehow and has filed an appeal of that, so we're currently responding to that. But other than that, everything's business as usual in the Law Director's office.
Anybody got any questions?
The property on Blicky, can we refer that now? Since we're on the hearing record?
There is a property on Blicky Street that was now knocked down that the city of Bussiris owns, and Mr. Me has mentioned plausibly transferring that ownership to the CIC to make that more saleable, so that would be, I think, something that we would like to refer to the Public Lands and Buildings Committee to discuss.
It's got to go to the...
You're right. Because it's owned by the city. So I would ask for that referral. Yes, thank you.
I'll make the referral to refer that to Public Lands and Buildings.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that motion pass. Motion passes. Okay.
I have a question.
What?
Sorry. Speaking of land, did we ever figure out what else was going on with that other land that was supposed to be referred? Mr. Reddell kind of dropped the ball. It was a whole bunch on Woodlawn? And he was waiting to get something else or something?
That was on, wasn't that on Woodlawn in that area?
There by Highland and stuff, all the way up Woodlawn, yeah.
That's already an open project, so you can put that on...
Do we have it in open projects?
It is.
Because there was more properties that come along down.
Right. We were supposed not, we weren't allowed to do really anything with it. I didn't think we got it referred.
Would you like that on your schedule for Thursday?
Well, we just kind of need to know what we have, so, yeah, I mean, if you...
I'm not sure what that is, so I can...
Just find out what all land we have.
I do know what land the city of Bussiris owns, so.
Yes, so...
Yes, I can bring you that.
I know, I know some of that was just kind of sitting waiting.
I can get information.
Landon has a map.
There was a piece of property that was holding it up, now I remember, and it's been kind of cleared. It was Baylor and Woodlawn. So if you can find out about that, because that was the one thing that was holding it up before he was allowing us to do anything.
I will look into that.
Aaron, didn't we have somebody that was interested in purchasing?
We had several people interested in some of this, so, yeah, that's why I'd like...
Especially one who lives right beside the property.
Yes, I'd like to get a role on this because, you know, somebody...
Get some taxes rolling in.
I'll put that on your...
Please. Thank you. But, yeah, if you can find out about that specific, that'd be awesome. Thank you.
Yeah. Any further things? No? Okay, next one. Auditor Joy Schiffer?
Thank you. You have my monthly reports for your review. If you have any questions, you can let me know. Since year end is fast approaching, I've got multiple referrals for the Finance Committee. I have several appropriations to cover salary and benefits and a retirement for December payroll, and a small appropriation in the Marion Road Assessment Fund, which that assessment is now completed, but we received just a little bit of money this year in our property taxes, so I need to appropriate that so we can allow the balance of those funds to be transferred to Seuys disposal for closeout. I also have one transfer within the safety levy that's needed for salaries for year end, and I have a list of appropriation reductions that are needed to bring various funds in line with actual revenue received for year end. And then we'll need several small advances from the general fund to cover expenses until grant money is received. I think we might need a little bit into the airport grant fund, and we'll need some into the victim advocate funds, and then those will be returned as soon as we get reimbursed for those expenses. So I'll have a breakdown of all of these. So, Mr. Law Director, you can let Alyssa know. She's going to be busy next week.
You?
Sir, I move to have these referred to Finance.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes. All referred collectively. Next one is, we have a, from Treasurer Jane Kermain's statement, a cash position dated November 1 through November 30, 2021. We need a motion to accept and file.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes.
No, you did the statement of cash position.
Okay, sorry. That's all right. All right. Next one is a Treasurer's report. I need a motion to accept and file.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that motion passes. We have a Police Chief report, and we also have a Fire Chief report for everyone to review and look at, and maybe have some questions at next council meeting, or maybe this Thursday, either. I need a motion to accept the City Officers' reports.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes. General public, any visitors input on any of these matters? Okay, for the first proposed ordinance is 47-2021.
Proposed ordinance 47-2021, an ordinance designating depositories of public money of the city of Bussiris for the period from October 18, 2021, through October 17, 2026, and declaring an emergency.
I need a motion to accept this as a first reading.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes. Yeah, we'll, I'm going to refer proposed ordinance 47-2021 to the Finance Committee. And public participation, anyone have anything to say about this proposed piece of legislation? No? Okay. Finance report?
Finance is favorable to proposed ordinance 47-2021 designated bank depositories.
And then you've got the sheet there.
Oh, okay, sorry. That's right. Okay. For the second and third reading, for the second reading of ordinance...
Take an answer. I don't know, it's just... Second and third.
Okay. For the second and third reading of 47-2021, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the reading of the caption and text, and declare it an emergency?
So moved.
Second.
Foote?
Yes.
Sherrick?
Yes.
Hallseth?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Myers, yes. Me?
Yes.
Trucca?
Yes.
Do I hear a motion to adopt ordinance 47-2021?
So moved. Second.
McKeever?
Yes.
Foote?
Yes.
Hallseth?
Yes.
Myers, yes. Me?
Yes.
Trucca?
Yes.
Sherrick?
Yes.
Ordinance 47-2021 is duly adopted. Anyone have any old and unfinished business?
So in the notes of the Finance, I remember they were supposed to come to us every so often and give us a report on what was going on, where our money was going, which we really haven't seen them. So after talking, it's in the budget, so we were talking about it last night on Finance, and we were considering getting a report from them every quarter. Every report that we would get, we would cut them a check for $12,500, so it would be a quarterly thing. We get a report on what our money, what they're working on, what their money, you know, where the money's going that we're paying them.
And then it would be a decision as to whether or not to pay them?
It would be a report. If we get the report, we get a bill with the report, everybody here gets a report on what's going on, how our money's being spent. I would feel a lot better about that.
Yeah.
I mean, they don't have to tell us specifically businesses coming in, but we're working on this, and what's going on, and I'm really interested in what Doug Foote's got to say.
Because you keep looking at me the whole darn time. I don't think you looked at anybody else the whole time. Whatever you guys feel as far as finance, you're the ones in charge of the money. I have always told you guys, if you want any kind of report from Gary, all we have to do is reach out, he'll come anytime, make himself available, and tell us whatever they're doing at that point in time.
So is this would be, Brian, would this be as far as, is there some kind of legislation we can do saying, hey, you give us a quote, you give us a report in January, end of January, you'll get $12,500. Next quarter, next quarter, next quarter. Is that a legislation thing? Is that agreement in between us? We don't get a report, you don't get any money?
Do you guys have an economic contract with them, or how does that?
We would have to refer to...
They're the ones that are basically the, in charge of our economic development.
Right.
Because we don't have an economic development office in the city.
But we have an agreement somehow, a contract with economic development, so you could specifically put in that contract, your payments are broken down quarterly, and they're due upon receipt of a report indicating what context you've made, what, you know, what progress we've made, what have you done for us, what are you doing for us? I mean, you could put anything in an agreement, in a contract, and these are your stipulations that we will pay you upon receipt of a report showing us what you've done. Yeah, absolutely. And I don't know exactly what the agreement right now with them is, but you can beef it up, putting those in there, and so for your 2022, we agree that $50,000 contract or whatever, and every will pay you quarterly based upon these stipulations. But...
Aaron?
So you don't, does anybody know what the contract says currently? Because I thought we were supposed to get a report, and I don't know that I've ever seen a report.
No, he did come and speak with us.
It's not a written report. It's just that basically we can refer them to come once a quarter, and give a report.
We're not even asking for them to come. We're just asking for a written, something written report.
Right, just a written report would be fine.
Where's the money going?[1744.12] Where's the money going, yeah?
Right.
Captain?
So one of the things I've come across here in the last couple weeks is, you know, different pieces of legislation. You know, we had a resolution authorizing payment, to enter into the agreement, and then for payment for the ambulance district. We had the same one for, for the Tourism Bureau. My guess is that somewhere there was a resolution when we first entered into this contract with them that specifies, I will try to find that, have that for the committee on Thursday, and then at that point, the discussion could lead us down which path, you know, if that resolution just needs amended, if it's already the way it should be and needs followed, I think we can just have that ready for Thursday and continue the discussion Thursday with it.
Do we refer that to economic and development?
I would also reach out to them and see what their opinion is on that matter, too, because maybe they don't want to do that. I mean, I can't say that they wouldn't, I mean, I don't know why, but.
I, I would think that we find out what, what we have first, and then have a discussion, and then if it needs altered, yeah, no need to reach out to them if we're not changing anything.
Development tonight so they can talk about it, yeah.
Okay.
All right, I'm going to do, I'm gonna refer it to finance and economic development, all in one motion. I need a motion and a second.
I'll motion it.
Motion.
Are you a motion? Mr. Me motioned it, I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Okay. It's referred to both committees, and you'll be able to talk about it Thursday night.
And we all, I'd like to make a referral for the health partner appointment as well.
That is not by council, that is by the mayor. That was done improperly last time.
Okay. Okay, any other unfinished business? Okay, new and miscellaneous business. Okay, well, I have a new and miscellaneous business here from Jenny Vermillion. She would like to create an ad hoc committee of council rules and procedures consisting of Jenny Vermillion, Mark McKeever, Kevin Myers, and C. Erin Sherrick. And this is, I need a motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed? Okay, motion passes. And that meeting will be so that you guys can meet on Thursday, December 9.
One last comment, though. This isn't a shot, this is just pointing out the obvious. The mayor's report tonight just spoke about what the partnership does for.
Oh, I know, I knew about it last night.
Can I jump in? Please. Mr. President? Yeah. Gary was scheduled to come, and he had a family tragedy in, in October, early November, so, you know, I did question the issue with him, so. And so, yeah, they're more than willing to come anytime, like Jim said, to, but what they do is, is, you'd be surprised what, how much they do and how many contacts. Their, their alliance on between all the state agencies, you know, we had a, Judge, yeah, and we had a, we were down to the finalists on a plant, chose somewhere else. They took the lead on all that, the presentations, and very, very impressive, very professional. We just.
We need a spec.
We can't afford our own, having our own economic development would be several hundred thousand dollars.
We're not even, we're not even discussing.
Yeah, and I know, we talked about this last night in finance, so. And, and I think what Jim is suggesting, I think is entirely reasonable. I don't think they're going to object to that at all, but I, see if I can maybe have, I don't know what their schedules are this week, but maybe have one of them come Thursday night, if they can.
That, or I would be comfortable, like, like Jim said, just getting a written report, an end-of-year summation, you know, that we could have for the next meeting on the 21st would be fine enough, or for the next Economic Development Committee, either or.
Okay. I'll reach out to them.
We need a spec.
They took, yeah, like, like Doug said, they took the lead on the, and they've got other grants to apply for, so, too, they.
They took the lead on that path, too, so, I mean, it was, and that was $50,000, but it was a nice thing to have, so. Thank you.
I need a motion to accept, I mean, except, yeah. To, to, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I have one more thing, I'm so sorry. I was supposed, I was asked to make sure everybody knew. If anybody knows kids that are school age or have some that they're getting things for, for Christmas, out at EcoTrend, they are giving away free books from where the Winford Library closed down, and so they've got chapter books and sports books and all sorts of books out there that they will give to kids for Christmas.
They probably don't have any ones, so they practically all stuff and gave away.
No, they got rid of the Winford.
Winford Library is that?
Well, that's actually part of that state grant, is they're not allowed to take any of the old, Eddie, everything that was completely usable and had just been purchased a month before it passed.
Yeah, so, so, yeah, out at EcoTrend, they've got a lot of books, and if they run out, they will have more. It's not a problem. There were over 4,000 books that were donated to EcoTrend and the community, and some of them have gone to help out the public library and, yeah.
Not such a bad thing, I think, as they think about that one, but still, I get your point. It's frustrating to throw your stuff away.
I get that. It's a micro much.
I need to excuse Jenny Vermillion.
So, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Okay, that motion passes. Referrals?
We have eight referrals. We have the Besiris Public Library Appointment to Economic Development, we have the Ohio Department of Commerce Division of Liquor Control to Health and Safety, letter from the Planning Commission to Plating, letter from the County Commissioners to Plating, BZA and BDSMA appointments to Economic Development, materials and supplies bids to Service and Finance, the partnership to Economic Development and Finance, and the Blicky Street property to Economic Development.
And before we adjourn, I'd just like to say thank you to everybody. Being council pro tem, it actually is fun being up here.